Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough, Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on August 6, 2020, and notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building and the Borough website. This meeting will run just like any other regular council meetings. Our multimedia director will be the Zoom administrator throughout the meeting. You will still be able to comment during the public comment sessions. When the time comes, you will click on the raise hand button and our multimedia director will then unmute each person one at a time so you may speak. Please remember to state your name and address before speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, April. If everybody could join me to salute the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
...
Under God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just have a moment of silence for our troops, their families, all our first responders and healthcare workers, and also Frank Russo-Elise, who passed away. He used to be our Borough Administrator under Ken Pringle's administration. All right, we're going to go right into workshop. There's a couple of things that we want to talk about. I guess first, we better do CBD G grant. Ed, if you could start that. It's a resolution that's on tonight that we're going to... We were applying for a grant. How this came about was that Monmouth County has a grant program that you get to look at different things in your town and see what you want to apply for. Mike Campbell was involved in these conversations. He suggested that we wanted to get a little bridge over to the island so our DPW staff could really make it a beautiful sanctuary over there. And with all his arguments and everything that he had, really made it would have been a great idea in my mind. I never saw any downside to it. But I want our business administrator, Ed Kirshenbaum, explain a little bit more about this grant and how it was being applied for. And it's something that we got some emails, we got petitions on it, and we don't even know if we could get the grant. It was something that we were just applying for. It's a very hard grant to get. It wasn't going to cost anything to the Borough of Belmar for anything that we were going to do. But Ed, if you could explain a little bit more to that on that.
Yeah, this is the Monmouth County... Development block grant from Monmouth County to erect the bridge at Silver Lake. It would span from the southwestern shoreline to the nearby island, less than 100 feet long. This is a highly competitive grant. This is the application phase. This is not even submission of the grant. There's no design. There's no plan per se. This is the start of transparency while we get the public involved and we just announce that we've applied for this grant. It's a highly competitive grant, like the mayor said. There's no guarantee to get this grant. It's a long process, but in talking to some residents and of course Department of Public Works, this grant would pay for a bridge to beautify the island in Silver Lake, some landscaping. And DPW gets over there and I'll let Director Campbell speak in a moment, but they only get there a couple of times a year. If you all remember, in Sandy, it was under salt water, so the... It really needs a good sprucing up to make it actually look like a nice-looking piece of land right in the lake area. So they can't get over there. Department of Public Works actually goes over, I believe, twice a year and cuts it, but they have to take a boat over with equipment on the boat, on a... Some type of vessel to get over there. So Mike Campbell has worked with a couple of groups. Like I said, this is the start of the application-type process. And Mike, you want to just discuss some of the things that we had?
Sure. Again, we started with this, just looking at that piece of property, trying to expand our park system, trying to get some indigenous plants there that would be beautiful, that we could maintain on a regular basis, along with the rest of the lake park. We did, we were in touch, I was in touch with Emily from the State Wildlife and spoke to her that if we were awarded the grant, which again, we're looking at a two-year-from-now process, if we were awarded it, we would like to make sure that we kept the sanctuary for the birds and shared that with them. She said she definitely could help us with that. There is actually a group of the program that deals with waterfowl, and they said we could meet if and when we get, you know, a nod or something that we're going ahead. At this point, it would be moot because, you know, we don't know if we're going to be moving forward with it or what the vision would be. But again, everybody we spoke to in our administration and others wished to preserve the wildlife there. We do have geese there. We do have swans that unfortunately, as of late, they lay their eggs and leave. But again, they do lay their eggs there. So again, we wanted to make sure that the waterfowl would have a home to share. We did speak with the state. When they are nesting, if needed, we could close the bridge and, you know, leave it or, you know, just put it off limits at that time. There are options. And again, it was just an idea. It was not... I never thought it was going to get to be such a controversial idea. It was an idea to say, "We have an extra area of park. Let's make it beautiful. Put out some benches there. Let people go out there, enjoy the island in Belmar, the only island in Belmar, and just enjoy the park system." That's all it was. I never meant to cause so much controversy, but that's what we were looking. We were looking to put a little bit more on our plate, keep it beautiful, and let people walk over there and enjoy the views and the quiet that it would be. That's all.
If, in fact, we were going to move forward on this, we would actually have to get the environmental process in place, possibly CAFR reports or DEP, and also get a committee together of residents for their ideas of how to beautify this piece of property in Silver Lake. So like I said, this is just a concept. It's just an application phase, something to do, like Mike said, about beautifying that island and making sure that it does not disrupt the waterfowl or anything of that nature. So that's where we're at now.
May I join in, please? Mayor, on this. As part of the Parks and Recreation, last year, one of the members of the committee now run around, we were looking, never thinking that's would happen, looked at the island and thought, "What a beautiful place it would be." What Mike had spoken about was talking to the EVA, DEP, the environmentalists. And what we thought of was getting a committee together, and hopefully, this would be an environmental center. Perhaps students can come and learn about the indigenous birds and plants on the island, and that's what we could use it for. It would be beautiful. We're not trying to disturb anything. There aren't going to be any massive parties, as some people are saying, on the island. And I was kind of upset when I looked at one of the petitions and saw that there were signatures from Australia on the petition. That, I don't know. It just dazzles me. But we want to make this beautiful, if indeed, we get the grant. We don't even know that we're going to get it. So let's wait and see. But nothing out there is going to be... It's going to be absolutely beautiful should this grant go through. We'll have a committee. We will see that it will always be pristine, and it will be beautiful. And I'd love to see it as this bird sanctuary, indigenous plants, and a learning center for our students from Belmar, from St. Rose, and for any other student who wants to use it. I think it would be a wonderful asset to the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. And thank... Thanks, Mike Campbell and our business administrator, Ed Kirshenbaum. I mean, I... When I got the petition with the names on it and I got a few emails on it, some of the people that emailed me had... Didn't have all the information because they were telling me about the cost of it and why we're applying for this grant because it wouldn't be any cost to Belmar. We are applying for the grant just because the grant is out there and it's a possibility that we could get it. So there was a lot of misinformation with some of the people that responded to me about it and even like to bird sanctuary or to wildlife sanctuary. And I said, "Well, it can't be that much of wildlife sanctuary where we're greasing up the eggs of geese because, okay, we don't want the geese, but how could we call a wildlife sanctuary while we're doing that?" So I tried to really look at all the downside to why everybody was opposed to this. And truthfully, I really can't, in my mind, and I'm a pretty reasonable guy, I can't figure out why because I can't find downside. I mean, it helps out Public Works immensely. If you take a look at the island, it really needs some... Something after Sandy because everything was under salt water, like Business Administrator Kirshenbaum said, and to go out there and really do some nice planting and work with the state environmentalists to really work to make it a beautiful sanctuary. So I really couldn't see any downside to it. So but I'm sure we're going to hear from the public tonight and we'll listen to it. All right, we'll move on. One of the other things...
I think we have to open it to the public for this application, the grant application.
But can't we do that during the consent agenda? No?
No, it's a separate hearing.
Okay, all right. All right. So April tells me that we have to open it up right now to the public because it is a grant application. So we... If you raise your hand or social media director, it'll let you in and you can talk about it.
All right, stand by. I see a couple of hands. Mark, you were the first to go. So one moment, please. And Mark, are you there?
Good. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mark, if you'd just give us your name and address, please.
Yes, Mark Pfeifer, 319 Fifth Avenue.
Go ahead.
First off, I applaud you for applying for any grants that we can use in law. It's a great idea. I wanted just to see, is this part of the Monmouth County Open Space Program or is this a different program?
Business Administrator Kirshenbaum?
The Open Space Grant is a 50/50 match, and they don't pay for design. This is a community development block. We're not applying for the Open Space Grant.
All right. So that answered that question. Later on, I do want to speak about later, the Open Space Grant Program and why we should apply. But for now, you answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mark. One moment, please. And we're going to Mary. One moment. Mary says you are using an older version of Zoom, so you can't talk. But if you come back in and update your Zoom, you should be able to talk. So you'll have time to do that if you like. Sorry about that. And going to Sheri. Stand by. And Sheri, are you there?
Hello?
I hear you.
Hi, Sheri Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Belmar.
Go ahead, Sheri.
As you know by now, I've submitted a petition regarding the footbridge. Obviously, hundreds of signatures we had got in 48 hours, and there was much opposition to building this. There is no reason to build a bridge to nowhere in our town. Silver Lake is great just the way it is. Please just leave well enough alone. If you feel the need to do something, why not pave our streets that are falling apart? I would ask that you would vote against the footbridge being built. In addition, at the beginning of this meeting, you said it would be no cost to Belmar residents. Yet, if you look on the resolution, which I printed off the internet right before the meeting, so I'm assuming that's the most up-to-date there is, it states, "Whereas the total construction estimate for these improvements is $235,000, and the Borough of Belmar will contribute up to 20% towards the total construction plus administrative and engineering costs." I understand that you said it was free in the beginning. However, in my opinion, it's contradictory. This is what I printed up off online. And also in regard to Pat Wan's comment, I just wanted to say that this type of petition, that is, you know, it does reach out to different people who feel that this issue is important, and that's why someone had signed from Australia. That is what the change.org petition is about. So you have no control over that. You have no control over who you get to sign it. You know, that's what the petition is. I understand that Pat Wan didn't understand that exactly.
I understand completely.
Oh, because you didn't understand?
I'm sorry. I said, "I understand completely. I'm just kind of amazed that someone out of the country would be concerned about an island where they probably don't even know where it is."
Maybe they don't know where it is. Maybe they feel strongly about bird sanctuaries, possibly.
It's going to be a bird sanctuary. Nobody's... None of the fowl is going to be...
I guess. I mean, I'm sure...
Let's get the grant first. Right now, we still don't even know whether we're going to get it or not.
Right. I mean, there obviously is a little contradiction here, being that you said in the beginning, it would be of no cost to anyone in Belmar, yet printed on the resolution, 2020-154 on the second, whereas it says that we'll be contributing 20% towards this construction plus administrative and engineering costs, which in my opinion is not at no cost to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Please. All right, going to Mr. McGovern. Stand by. Hold on, Ms. Mary. Stand by. Hold on. And Mr. McGovern, you also have that same issue. We need to update your Zoom. You can try to come back in again. One moment, please. Gerald, one moment. And we'll come back to the other two that couldn't make it in after Gerald. One moment, please. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
409 Fifth Avenue. A question first. The application, where was that published on the website?
It wasn't?
I... I spent a little time going through all the different pages of the website, and the application is not posted on the website. So that could be the reason why many people have a misunderstanding about what is in the application. And as you know, this is one of my pet peeves, that the council, the administration is not transparent. You have something on the agenda, you refer to an application, but it's nowhere to be found. The only way we got it was someone, not myself, made an Oprah request. So that document was put forth as an Oprah request and could have very easily have been put on the last column of the Meetings and Agendas page as an "other," but it wasn't. Okay, so that could be the reason why there's some confusion over what's in it. To address the money issue, as Ms. Russo said, the resolution doesn't refer to a contribution from the town. So can we get an answer as, is this going to be cost-free to Belmar or is it going to cost the taxpayers some money? Oh, it also says on the front page of the project funding application that the CDBG funds requested is $200,000, and the total project cost is $235,000. So what's the answer? Is it free or is it going to cost the taxpayers?
As of right now, we're looking towards no cost to the taxpayers. This is just an application.
That's why it's on the agenda tonight.
How are we going to do that?
Well, we should...
Only getting a $200,000 grant. How is there going to be no cost to the taxpayer?
But there's not even a cost factor, what it costs to build this yet. So you just put in...
I beg to differ with you, Mr. Business Administrator, because if you look at page... Let's see. If you look at, I guess it's page 12, the town engineer has proposed an engineer's estimate. And I'm not going to go through all the figures, but...
Right.
...total construction estimate is $235,000.
Right. That's just an estimate. That's exactly right.
It could be, it could be more than that.
Well, we would not go more than that because we only want to get what the grant's going to give us.
But the grant's only going to give you $200,000.
And we don't know what the entire cost factor is. This is just an application process to be submitted so we can start the process and make sure the public has a way to see what it's all about.
The engineer's estimate is probably high. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure.
All right. So then, we're not sure whether it's going to cost the taxpayers any money.
Our position is it will not cost the taxpayers any money.
Okay. But we don't know that right now. That's the...
If we were awarded the grant and it came and we got $200,000 and it costs $235, we're not building it. That's what I'll tell you. That. If we got a grant for 200 and we can't get it built for 200, we won't build it.
I'm not an expert on these grants, but isn't there a requirement that the town put forth some money when they're going to build something from a grant?
There are certain grants, like the Open Space Grant, has a 50% match. This is not that type of grant.
Okay. Against the footbridge, number one, the educational reasons I don't think are significant. As a former science teacher and a biology major, and having walked around Silver Lake many, many times, the educational opportunities of Silver Lake are on the shoreline, not on the, what is it, .3-acre island, right? The vegetative growth, the animals, the fish, right? Those are all things that children, students can see from the shoreline. And, you know, the whole Silver Lake area, I think it's like 25 acres. So there's plenty of opportunities there. I don't know what the perimeter of the shoreline is, but there's more than ample areas for science teachers and educators to use the shoreline as an educational opportunity. As far as making the island a bird sanctuary, it seems a little contradictory to me that you're going to allow people to go on the island and have it as a bird sanctuary at the same time. Okay? So that bothers me a little bit also. The other thing that bothers me is that we're trying to improve this little piece of island at the end of the lake when we have the whole perimeter of the lake that needs improvement. I was going to walk around today to see how many benches were around the lake, but I didn't have the time. But I'll take a guess. I would say there's probably six or seven. Maybe Mr. Campbell knows exactly how many benches are around the lake.
Sheri, I can help you with that one.
Okay.
We have many applications for benches. The company who's producing them is closed because of COVID. We should have about 25 around the lake when we're finished.
Okay. And that will, that will actually also make the lake a better place for recreational use. There's also an opportunity, I think, for tree planting, especially along what would be, I guess, that South Lake Drive extension of Sixth Avenue. I've walked my dog along there, and the area between the track and the street, to me, is a prime location to put some nice trees to provide shade so people can sit and relax on a bench and observe the lake and the ducks and the swans and anything else that's in there. So I don't see the reason why we have to tamper with the island. It looks, the shoreline of the island, as I can see it, looks similar to the shoreline of the lake. I don't see that there's any educational opportunities there. I don't see the value of having people being able to access that. How the police are going to police that is another problem. Is it going to be closed that night? Is it going to be open at certain times? It's near the park for the children. Who's going to watch the children? Are they going to run over to the island? I just think it's a bad idea, and the efforts should be put somewhere else, probably around the lake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Stand by, please, everybody. We're trying Maria again to see if this works. No, I'm sorry, Maria. Put your hand down. And again, feel free to come back when you upgrade your Zoom. Thank you. Stand by. She might be coming back. Okay, let's see. To BL, stand by. Go ahead. BL.
Hello. My name is Brad Lomas. I live on Ninth Avenue in Belmar. I think that the, you know, one of the things that's going on with the... Everybody's talking about the costs, and I think those costs that we're speaking of are costs that are just to build the bridge, I would assume, and improvements on the island. We're not talking about maintenance, which will cost the town money. The bridge is going to have to be maintained. Any benches you put there are going to have to be maintained. And if DPW is going out there twice a year now and they're going to go out more, then obviously, that's an added cost also. But really, you know, my issue with it, I'm against this to get that out of the way, but I think, really, what's the point? To me, the island is beautiful already. I don't think you need to ruin that with benches. I think if plants are truly indigenous, they don't need to be maintained, right? That's the definition of an indigenous plant. It's a plant that's going to do well in the place where it belongs. There's so many other, you know, like, I think, I'll echo what Sheri said. There's, there's many places around the lake that could improve and that do need improvement. I don't think, I don't think we, as people, we don't need to take everything there, right? Like, we can let, we can let the wildlife and just let them have that island. That's the one little spot they have. Let them, let them keep it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One moment. And we're going to Elaine. Stand by. And go ahead, Elaine. Go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Oh, great. Elaine Giordano, 605 Ninth Avenue in Belmar. I taught science. I'm a retired science teacher of Brielle Elementary, seventh and eighth grade, for 24 of my 34 years. So I can tell you that one thing, it's a nice concept. We certainly used to go to the Manasquan Inlet and use that area for sanding, plankton towing, et cetera. That's a pretty small island, and as a teacher, I would be concerned about bringing students on it. I have so many concerns about this bridge in terms of a bird sanctuary, and the foot traffic that it will, that will be created, that I think we need to decide if we're really being serious about it being a sanctuary for especially, not every bird, the ducklings and the swans. And this year, I had an opportunity to really observe the swans. They begin building their nest, or began this year, building the nest in early April, the male and female together. I read that the female continues to lay eggs for over three weeks after she lays her first eggs. So it takes three weeks just to get the eggs out sometimes. And by the way, in June, toward the latter part of June, she had those babies. She, those, those signals hatched. Now, I don't know about you guys, but I taught school. I know I'm not taking my students out in February and March. I'm not taking them out in the winter. I want to be out when the weather is warm. I'm probably not going to do it in September when I'm starting my school year. And by October, there are just too many other things going on. I would love to take the kids in May and June. However, that is when those swans are still on that island. So here's the deal. It's, is it a bird? Make a decision then. Don't, don't, you know, is it, is it a bird, going to be a bird sanctuary, really? Or is it going to just be a place that you perceive as... Or is it going to just be a place that you perceive as lovely for people to sit? And by the way, and you all know this, I am not telling you anything that isn't so. That used to be a jewel, that lake. That lake is, is polluted and full of, of non-native phragmites that invade that constantly. And the DPW works very hard to get that under control. So it seems to me we're putting a beautiful pair of Jimmy Choo shoes on a tattered, worn-out-looking Kmart special dress. Forgive me because I have nothing wrong with shopping at Kmart. But really, you're going to build a bridge when that lake needs so much more. So for all of you, I have to say, I'm disappointed in every single one of you. Tom Brennan, you're on the Environmental Commission, or are you not? The Environmental Commission has said nothing about this, nothing. I'm shocked. And not for anything, guys, but I do feel qualified to speak. I have a master's in science from Rutgers. I'm damn proud of.
Elaine Giordano, if I could tell you, if I may, I have a statement from the Environmental Commission. They are unanimously opposed to this project.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Because everybody's making it sound like the other people spoken, Mr. Walsifur, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Juan, like somehow we're all like these Debbie Downers, don't want this bridge. I'm saying it's a foolhardy, ridiculous thing to, to apply for a grant for. You know what that bridge is? Quick and easy. Makes you guys feel good. Clean that lake up. And you know what that would take? That would take a big time grant. That would take beaucoup bucks and a lot of energy on the part of people to clean that lake up. It used to be the jewel of Belmar. So anyway, Tom, thank you. Guys, thank you for letting me speak. Clearly, I feel very strongly about this.
Thank you very much. One moment, please. Coming to Brian. Brian, are, Brian, are you there?
I think I am.
You are? Yes, sir. Go ahead, please.
Okay. That's a tough act to follow, Lane. I'm sorry. My name is Brian McGovern, 207 South Lake Drive in Belmar. Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. First, I would, I would like to voice my opposition to the construction of a pedestrian footbridge to the island in Silver Lake. I think we need to go back over 100 years to when the mayor and commissioners of Belmar first approved the building of an island in the middle of Silver Lake. That's a man-made island. I believe the purpose was not to keep the swans and ducks from the people, but rather to keep the people from the swans and ducks. The island keeps the bird life safe year-round and gives them a place to nest during the spring. If a bridge is built, many of the people that walk around Silver Lake will now detour over the bridge to the island. There is no need to have a people park on that half-acre island sanctuary. Give the swans and the ducks their half acre. Don't take any of that away from them. One problem that I see, I'm certain that people will walk or carry their dogs across the bridge despite signs that say no dogs. Besides people and dogs, the bridge is going to allow other animals such as the fox, the raccoons, feral cats, to cross over the, the bridge to the island at night and attack the ducks. These animals have not had access to that island in over 100 years. In the spring, I can see the swans aggressively protecting their nests and attacking an adult or a child that gets too close to them. When I heard about the grant and the bridge, I'm against the bridge. I'm totally in favor of improving the habitat of that island with indigenous plants. You are absolutely correct. Sandy destroyed the plants and trees that were growing on that island. And if you get a professional person to improve that island, and I know we tried to do something in the spring of 2013. The problem is water supply. If you can use that grant, you get a water supply over there so that you can irrigate that island, so those plants will grow. That's going to be terrific. But please, no bridge. You know, I'm going to finish in saying that don't build the bridge. Give the birds their half acre. But I really appreciate the job that you're doing as far as wanting to improve that island. It's, it's desperately, it needs it. But please, no bridge.
But you're in favor of the grant? Is that, is that what I'm getting?
Yes.
Apply for the grant.
If you can get a grant to improve that island. But I don't think it needs any park benches over there. It needs just to get better trees, shrubs, anything that will increase or improve the habitat for the birds, the mallards, the swans. You know, during the, during the winter, there's many, many other kind of bird life that goes there, other kind of ducks, the teal ducks, the ruddy ducks. You have duck-like birds, the mergansers, the grebes. You have pomerans. You have herons, night herons. You have blue swan, uh, great blue herons. You have egrets, you know? You know, so that really, that island attracts other wildlife, which, so I got to compliment the mayor and commissioners of Belmar from over 100 years ago. Looking forward to seeing the advantage of having an island sanctuary for the bird life. But they didn't anticipate Sandy, did they? You know? So I think a grant to improve the wildlife, and I think you're going to need to get fresh water over there. You can't use water from the lake. It's too acidic. It's going to kill the, kill the plants that you, you, you put over there.
Well, that's what we're doing here tonight. We are going to apply for a grant. So whether it's
You apply for the grant and not have a bridge attached to it. Yeah, that's great. But I can't say, people don't need to be on that, that island. You know, it's, it's for the swans, the ducks, the other birds. It keeps the other wild animals off of it, which would harm the, the nests in the springtime. I mean, a fox or raccoons are just looking for duck eggs. Yeah.
Okay, well, that's what we're doing here, applying for the grant. It's not for a bridge. I mean, we put the bridge in there, but we're going to apply for a grant to see what we could do.
Yeah, because I think if plans with the bridge are, go with that. And, and, you know, Mike Campbell, you guys, DPW can do anything, I know. And it makes it harder to get over to that island without a bridge. Joe Neal was going over there with his lawnmower for years to, to cut it and maintain it. And I know by putting a lawnmower in the boat and rowing over, that's great. Something was mentioned before about the, the geese. Because I was a member of the Geese Peace Plan and I oiled the eggs over there. That Geese Peace Program was an inter-local agreement with the six towns, which involved a dog. But the oiling of the eggs was approved by PETA. And so it was a very humane way of handling the resident geese population, which was not natural to Belmar. If you grew up in Belmar in the 50s and 60s, the geese came twice a year, in the fall and in the spring. They migrated. And then later on in the 90s, they started coming and staying year-round and they became a problem with the grounds and everything like that. So the town of Belmar, the council then approved the oiling of the eggs and it, it solved the problem. We got, we reduced the numbers. I mean, the very first year, I oiled 21 nests with over 125 eggs. That's how severe a problem it was with the counted geese. In other words, thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the time to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One moment. And we're coming to Cyrus. One moment. One moment, Cyrus.
All right, I'm in.
I hear you, sir.
Hey, guys, how are you? Our Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, I'm sorry, 450th Ave, Belmar. You know, we had a lot of discussions tonight about a footbridge over, you know, Silver Lake and you know, personally, I couldn't care less whether it's a bridge there or not. But more importantly, you know, my question is, this grant that you're applying for, could it be applied to like other areas that could improve the town in a more sufficient way? Or is it just restricted to footbridges over lakes to an island?
No, it's, it's to improve something in our town. So, and, and to beautify it. It's more of a beautification type of grant. So it's not like we could take the grant and pave a road with it. We can't do that.
All right, but does the town council think that, you know, when the beautification of our town, you know, that a footbridge, which in my opinion, and I live a block away from the lake, you know, the chances of me walking over that bridge is probably slim to none unless it, you know, allows for bicycles, as you know, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, the thing is that, you know, can we apply that money to things that may otherwise beautify the town that made more practical sense? I mean, I really don't care about oil on eggs and I don't care about, you know, raccoons and all that kind of stuff. But I lived here for 26 years and quite frankly, you know, I've never had a problem with the island being there, you know? I thought it was always pretty cool and, you know, but if there's a way that we can apply that, that, that number, you know, that you're requesting from the county to beautify another part of town, then maybe that's where we ought to be going. We're spending time. You know, the first, what is it now? Well, we're 42 minutes into the, into the council meeting and we're talking about footbridges that go to an island to nowhere. You know, I mean, you know, I mean
I, I got it, Si, but I mean, you know, when we took a look at the grant and talking to Mike Campbell and the DPW and knowing the problems that we have on that island because of, of the sandy. And, you know, it's nice to beautify the island and have people get over there, but DPW has to get over there. You know, it, it's hard to put a tree in the boat and get it over there and plant the trees and all that. That's why we took a look at it. Believe me, that I think there's going to be this kind of controversy over a footbridge to, to work on the island for our DPW workers to get over there and do what they need to do. I'd never thought there would be this kind of controversy because I still, to the life of me, don't see a downside to it. But
Well, well
I don't want to ride the bike over it, but, you know, so I, I still
Mark, with all respect, I mean, you know, really what this boils down to is that, you know, and, you know, kudos to, to Mike Campbell. I mean, he does, you know, a great job. He handled the storm real well. You know, he's always been there whenever I needed something or whether the town needed something. You know, but the fact of the matter is, are we really doing this superficially to, you know, for the benefit of the DPW? Or are we doing it because we think that we're going to become some, you know, you know, some paradise where bird watchers can come and watch on an island? I mean, in all seriousness.
Si, this grant is so hard to get. It's a long shot. We've picked something out to apply for it. If we get it, it's going to shock me because this grant is a very hard grant to get. And so we picked something out to apply for it. We're applying for the grant. I go, I just have never seen any controversy like we have to apply for a grant. I mean, we're not building the bridge. We're not doing anything. We don't even know if we're going to get this, this grant. It, it's such a highly competitive grant. We picked something, so we figured, let's put something in. It, it's like hitting the lottery. If we get it, we get it. I'm like, I, I never seen such controversy over building or putting in for a grant that we never get.
Well, I
Do we sit here as a council and just say, hey, you know what? They're willing to give us $200,000, but we don't want it, you know? Let the
No, no, that's not my, that, that, that's definitely not my contention.
Listen, I got professionals here that we all took a look at it. Mike Campbell came up with the idea. I thought it was a great idea. I really, I still to this day, I think it's a great idea. And I said, absolutely, let's put in for the grant. Let's see what we're going to get. Believe me, I've never seen this kind of contention to apply for a grant. We could sit up here and say, you know what? Heck with it. Why, why are we getting ourselves aggravated? Let's not even apply for it. I go, they want to give us, if somebody, if we hit the lottery, we had to get $200,000 for it? I'm like, it's a home run, I think. But I guess, I guess, um, my opinion is like way out and out of space compared to everybody else.
No, 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 no. Mark, you know, don't get me wrong. In a different environment, a footbridge from, you know, the lake to the island may be a great thing, but what, everything else that's going on right now. You know, and, and with all the other issues that are happening in town, if you get $200,000, you know, and you can put that in some place, you know, I'm not sure that a bridge going to the island is necessarily, you know, the, the, the right, you know, the right move. You know, it's a bridge to nowhere.
Si, listen, I know we can go on forever, but everybody's got an opinion on it. That's your opinion, you know, everybody else has an opinion. So, well, we'll leave it at that. I mean
I want, I want you to apply for the grant, but I just wish you would reconsider where you want to place that money. You know, El Beach, I don't use El Beach, but it's a mess. I mean, there's so many other areas in town that can theoretically use, you know, an upgrade. And to put a bridge from, you know, a dock to an island, to me, doesn't make any sense. But, you know, and, and, and I understand in a different environment, a bridge to the island would be great. But based on what's happening right now in our society, I think that it's a waste of money.
Okay.
And we could be putting that money somewhere else.
Thanks, Si.
Mark, may I?
Yes.
Mark, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
The, we're putting, I don't know which came first here, the chicken or the egg. We were not trying to build a bridge somewhere. We were trying to beautify the lake, as Mr. McGovern had stated. We, the lake, or the island was destroyed after Sandy and everybody knows that. Anybody that's been here for a long time, it used to be actually absolutely magnificent. That's what we wanted to do. We talked about the bridge. Yes, it would, you know, make it easier for us, but that is not the only reason for us to build a bridge. We thought it would be good for children to go over there, schools to go over there and enjoy a beautiful park that's not there now, accessible to any kind of education for children, the schools, you know, small, you know, kindergartens, whatever it is to walk over with their, with their teachers if they felt it was safe. I can't argue with Elaine. She was a teacher, so if she says it wouldn't be safe, then, you know, again, I'm not arguing with that. It was just an idea. But again, we're not talking about, the grant is not to build a bridge. It is not a bridge grant. It is to improve a park, a part of a park, and see what we can do to make that beautiful again, where it doesn't have all the phragmites, where it doesn't have all that, where it have some kind of indigenous plants. Again, when we did the beach, we went up there and we found plants that were indigenous, that were approved by the state and all that. We would do the same. I've already spoke to the state to partner with us. So again, it was just an idea to try and get money to improve a park. That's all. It was not to build a bridge because we wanted DPW to go over there with wheelbarrows and it would be easier. We have a little boat. We get our stuff over. We do it twice a year. I thought we could keep more maintenance there. Again, whether it's water, like Mr. McGovern said, or something else, we wanted to improve a park. That's all. It was not meant to build a bridge because we wanted to build a bridge.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. All right, thank you, Cyrus. One moment. Mr. Kramer, sir, coming to you. Standby. Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
All right, Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Kramer.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I did review the Community Development Block Grant Project Funding Application. And I guess it's about 30 pages. I wanted to comment that Avakin Engineers did a, did a pretty good job with this. And even, even if the discussion is not about the bridge, I was trying I was trying to, you know, find some nuggets in the work that the engineer had performed. And if you would just take a quick look at the engineer's categorization of Silver Lake, and that's in the project description on page 3-1, and I'll read it to you. Silver Lake is a freshwater body fed by Belmar Storm Sor system and the surrounding shallow groundwater. If you recall, a couple meetings back, I guess the last time that there was a discussion about Silver Lake, the question came up as to whether it was freshwater, brackish, saltwater, whatever. I think we have something here that, that we can take to the bank on, on that issue. The, the engineer is categorizing Silver Lake as a freshwater body. Also, if you recall, the discussion about Silver Lake, also the question came up as to the requirements of a freshwater fishing license to offer some protection for the fish that apparently some people are catching and, and just throwing aside. I think together with, with the experts, and I'll, I'll put the engineer and the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife. The Division of Fish and Wildlife stocked the lake with freshwater species. I think we have an answer to the question that you raised the last time the discussion came up, Mayor, as to whether, whether a fish, freshwater fishing license is required. And I think we've answered that. Now, now, whatever it becomes of the, of the bridge, and I'm not sure what signage that we have down there, but I think it would be a good idea to have some signage reflecting that a fishing license is required for people age 16 to 69. I'm interested in your comments.
Well, I mean, I guess that's something we could look at, you know, I, I don't know too much about it, if, if requires a fishing license or not. I know we had, I can't remember the total discussion about the, the catch and release that we were doing, but the ordinance that we're going to put in place for the catch and release, I mean, Mike Campbell is up on all that, and I, I just can't remember what the conversation was, where we left it, or, I know we're going to talk to a few people. Mike, can you bring us up to the speed on that?
Yep, I spoke to the scientists at the Fish, uh, Wildlife for the State, and I also spoke to their enforcement. The scientist told me that the water was more brackish than fresh, and that he did not know if a license was required. He told me the water was good. He told me they would be saying again this September or this October, between September and October, to see again with the enforcement people, to see if they could stock it for next year. The water is fed fresh, but it also has a saltwater component with the pipe that comes off of the top of the lake on the east side. So again, I'm not trying to argue with Mr. Kramer, he's a very brilliant man. He's saying it's all freshwater, okay, it's freshwater. It's not what the state's telling me. They are telling me for enforcement reasons, they would come down and look at it to see whether they wanted to enforce the licensing or not. I asked them to come down, I want to have people fish there, but I also want people to respect their catch. So I do agree with that, I've been a fisherman for a long time. And that's why we got talked out of the ordinance, which, when I brought up the other ordinance for the, um, maintaining the fish and putting them back in, that was at the suggestion of the scientist. What, I didn't come up with that brainstorm, that was at the suggestion of the scientist. He thought that was a good idea. The enforcement gentleman said, if there are people that have a fishing license and they wish to keep the fish, they can do that, and that would not be enforced. So he said, you're better off just putting a sign down there, saying that it is state law not to kill your catch. And I have the verbiage at my work, I don't have it here, I apologize, I didn't know we were going to be talking about this under the grant. But again, I can bring it for next meeting if you wish, Mr. Kramer, or you can stop by my work, and I can give it to you. But again, this was all, again, to make the island better and make it just a beautiful place while you're walking from any angle on that lake to see it a beautiful lake again, and if we could go over there for education or whatever, we thought it was a good idea. So again, I can look into, again, the licensing, Mr. Kramer, see if they'll come out. Right now, they weren't interested in coming out. It doesn't mean they won't come out, but they did not have anything. I, I was asking for help from the enforcement people to come out and stop the people from killing the fish, which they are still doing.
Thanks, Mike. Does that answer your question, Mr. Kramer?
Yes, it does. Not 100%, but yes, and I, I appreciate Mike's efforts and, and his investigation into that. Like I said, I don't see any, number one, if it's, if the water is to be characterized as freshwater, that offers a level, that's the most protective of the environment. The other benefits of fishing licenses, there's a lot of things that, that people do that, as we know, aren't smart. One thing is when you get a fishing license in New Jersey, you do get a copy of all the regulations, the rules, the seasons, and, and so on, and, and the size limits. Certainly, I think with large mouth bass stocked in Silver Lake, the large mouth bass need protection during their spawning season. And people with licenses, freshwater licenses, know that. The other thing with the requirement of a freshwater fishing license is that there are societal benefits associated to it. One of them being child support. You can't get a fishing license in, in New Jersey.
Mr. Kramer, I hate, just hate to stop you, but this, this is, this is for the bridge application grant. I, I mean, you know, I, I know we could talk about the lake for, for a while, and the fishing and stuff, but, but the purpose of this public session is basically for the, the bridge, the application for a grant, and right now, it's for a bridge, but it might change. So, if you have comments on that, we could talk about in public session and get further detail about the fishing.
Okay, very good. On page, on page number four, I, I do have one more comment.
Okay.
The engineer left the street address for the project and did not include it. I would make my suggestion, after seeing some Monmouth County badged vehicles parked on Ocean Avenue this past week, that the street address be listed as 501 Ocean Avenue, Monmouth County Route 18. It might be to our benefit to identify or give the street address as being on a county road inasmuch as we are applying for a Monmouth County Community Development Block Grant. That's the end, that's the end of my comments.
All right, that's a great idea, we'll put that down. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you so much, stand by. All right, we've got two Marias here, in Zoom fashion, we're going to give it a try. Hold on, Maria, we see we have two shots here. Maria, Maria?
I'm here, can you hear me?
All right, we got.
Hi, Maria.
Hi, Maria Rontanaro, 1246 Pine Tree Way. In my experience with community grants, I think you have to have a detailed proposal, am I not right? Ours includes the footbridge right now, so clearly, we, you know, we, the, the people of Belmar have kind of spoken with 400 signatures that we don't want this footbridge, that we don't believe that it makes sense for us. But, my request is, is to ask the public what we would like, you know, which is what the community, a community grant should have a community assessment, just like what you're doing now, and you're hearing your feedback from the community. So, I mean, personally, I would like to beautify MacLeary Park, but I think we need to come back with options and then bring it to workshop, and then we can go for the grant. So at this point, I'm saying please vote no. Thank you.
Okay, Linda Sharkis, stand by. Linda, are you there?
Yes, Linda Sharkis, 404th.
Hi, Linda.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for your patience. A number of people have brought up education. I have put together a group of people who are interested in creating informational signs around the lake to share with the general public what kind of habitat is there, and some of the, talk about some of the indigenous plants. So, I would appreciate if when you're going for this grant, this is part of the plan, so having plants and birds flying around, or, you know, the different animals is great, but if you don't know what they are, it really isn't an educational opportunity. So that would be my recommendation, is put something about signage similar to what's on, next to the inlet, because it's, I think that is an educational opportunity. I'd like to see Silver Lake become that gem that Elaine referred to by sharing with the people in the, you know, in the community what's, what kind of birds and ducks are around the lake. And it's, COVID has given me the opportunity to spend a lot of time walking with my dog, so I, I see that there is a need for some of this. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda, stand by. And we have no more hands.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
We need a vote to close the.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to read the statement from the Environmental Commission, just so it's in the record. Because they took the time to write it and send it to me.
Or should we close the public session first, and then Tom can read it? Yeah, I guess, let's close the public session, and then.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, okay, now you can.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the Environmental Commission is established for purposes of the protection, development, and use of natural resources, including water resources located within the borough of Belmar. It is the duty of the BEC to study and make recommendations to the planning board and the mayor and borough council concerning open space preservation, water resources management, air pollution control, noise control, solid waste management, environmental appearance, protection of flora and fauna, and marine sources, resources. The vegetation of the man-made island on the west end of the lake provides a breeding area for the waterfowl, including the swans. Waiting birds are common in the grass-lined shallows. Bird life in and around the lake is substantial with residential, seasonal, and occasional species identified. The island also provides a nesting habitat for a number of species, including black-crowned night herons, listed as threatened regarding nesting habitat. Ruddy ducks, coot, and high-billed grebes have all been identified at Silver Lake in the fall, winter, and spring. Like the black-crowned night heron, these three species are all listed as threatened regarding nesting habitat. The swan nesting area is like a wildlife sanctuary, much like the bird preserve on the beach. And it should be closed during mating and nesting seasons, which eliminates the recreational purpose of summer access from April through August. It would be subject to a New Jersey DEP waterfront development permit, and that would also have to address wildlife impacts. Putting in a footbridge will allow people to walk around the island, which would disrupt both birds and plants. It is not a public priority as the borough faces budget constraints with a local share and will become a maintenance budget item. Money would be better spent stabilizing the shoreline with more plantings to reduce silt interurbidity and reduce goose access by obstructing their entrance and exit. Regarding the question of environmental conditions and the change in land use, we find the answer no to be completely false, as the term land use is the term used to describe the hu- human use of land. This project would change the island from a no human usage to human usage. Answering this question in the negative is misleading at best. Belmar Environmental Commission is formerly and unanimously, formerly and unanimously opposed to a footbridge at the Silver Lake Island.
Thank you. I guess April will, will take 154, and we'll vote on it now? Since we went through the public hearing, should we take a vote on that now?
I think we have to make a motion and take it out of consent.
Yeah, if you want.
Well, that, that's what we're going to do, yeah. So we'll do that. So we'll make a motion, take it out of consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. And we'll take the vote.
All right. All right, so Resolution 2020-154, Resolution authorizing the submission of a CDBG application to the county of Monmouth for the project known as Silver Lake Pedestrian Footbridge. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
I'm voting yes for this. I did want to comment, though, and maybe should have done so in the workshop, workshop session, but this resolution is simply to submit an application. There is a long road before any bridge is built, and there are lots of opportunities to ditch this entire thing if we decide it's not the right thing. And I'd hate to see us leave $200,000, or had the potential for $200,000 on the table because we missed some date for submission of, of a grant application. So, again, I'm voting yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I voted yes, and pretty much for same reasons as Tom, not necessarily footbridge. This is a grant we can't pass up. We were lucky that it was extended because I, I believe the deadline was the beginning of the week. We were hit with that storm. So this is, this is a grant, again, we may not get it, but if we do get it, maybe we won't build a footbridge, but we can clean up the island. There's a lot to do with it. So, we'll have to the grant season if we get it first.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brennan?
You know, before I vote, I have to also, I have to recommend Mr. Kirshbaum and Mr. Campbell for all their hard work putting this application together, and you know, at the outset, I thought, yeah, it's not a bad idea. And I really do, I really do hear the concern about leaving that kind of money available to us, just leaving that. That being said, you know, I can't think of a single issue in my six years on the council that has had generated the kind of comments I've had and heard and seen overwhelmingly in the negative. I haven't seen a positive comment about this project since it came up and became public knowledge. And, you know, in all good conscience, I have to vote no, based on public input. So thank you, my vote's no.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yeah, I, I made my comments known at the beginning. It's a $200,000 grant, and we have the opportunity to apply for it. It's a long shot to get, and for the grant, I am definitely voting yes. Okay, we're going to move on. Ed, before we get to the website, let's just talk about in workshop ordinance number 2033, because Mr. Budafuka, Budafusko emailed today, and in reading through it, I know we got a verbal from civil service about what we were doing, but I, I think, after reading through it, and I want to thank him for sending it to us, that we really should take a good look at it, make sure we're, we're, we're on the right track on what we're doing, and if we're not, let's do it the right way, because this administration is going to do it the right way. So, I think what we should do, and it's, you know, I, I want to talk to the council members, I know I've talked to Mr. Dasty, I think we should table this and make sure either we get a letter from civil service that say it could be done the way we need it to be done, or let's look at our options, so. What do you think?
I agree. We, because of COVID, it's tough to get to civil service. So let's just make sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is.
Okay, all right, all right. So that's what we're going to do, we're going to. Okay, all right. All right. So that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna table ordinance number 20-33 for the second reading until we get some legal opinion from civil service. Yeah, when we get to it, I guess we'll vote on it. Yeah. I just wanted to bring that up in workshop because I know after Mr. Butifusko sent that to us, we had a lot of discussion on it today because I want to make sure that it's right. We're not gonna do, we're not just gonna go half-cocked into that. So and then Ed, if you can talk about the, the launch of the website for tomorrow?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. But after quite some time. It's gonna be modernized, the way, the way people can access it. The layout will be a lot more user-friendly. You can view it on any size desktop monitor. The mobile version will be designed and displayed and function properly on mobile phone or tablets. No downloads or no apps are necessary. And the desktop, one of the problems we had was the desktop and the mobile was tough to navigate. So now they look identical to avoid any confusion based on a lot of our alerts that we send out there. And the mobile users will have the same benefit that they would have on the desktop. So the homepage will have important messages section added to the post crucial town messages and updates. Just like in the past, we utilize it for COVID-19 power outages, the beach closings, things of that nature with expiration dates at times. We're gonna have a new calendar, larger view, easier to read. An agenda center that'll be mobile friendly. And basically, it's gonna be a whole new look and feel for our social media platforms that we can do a lot more notification on times that we have to get information out to our residents. So I thank the team that we have in place for putting this all together. We're gonna launch that tomorrow. I know that Mr. Sabia is going to actually do a video tutorial of how to actually navigate the website right on our website. So if anybody has any questions, they can actually just view a video to see how they can access all the important areas of our website. So that's gonna launch out tomorrow. Like anything electronically, technology, well, there might be a few bugs here and there, but we're gonna work through them. You're on mute.
There we go. Take me off of mute. Yeah, I want to thank everybody, especially John Sabia. I mean, it was a monumental task from when we, when we started the administration. One of the things that we wanted to look at the website and really revamp it and bring it up to date. I didn't realize the time that it would take, but you know, the team that worked on it and did it. So hopefully, we have very few bugs and it launches off pretty nicely tomorrow. So, but I know John's listening, but thank you, John.
It was my pleasure, Mayor, and the team that did it, they're, they're really great. And I want to say thank you to them as well. Thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have anything else on workshop. That'll be April. That's it. Okay. We have two petitions. One of them is the Eighth Avenue Speed Bumps and Optical Illusion Walkway. So we're gonna move that over. We're gonna let the police department review that. And then the other one was the Silver Lake Footbridge. So we have that. And then, let's see, we're moving on to approval of minutes.
But I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st meeting.
Make the motion. Second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes. Reports of council. Councilman Carvelli?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much. It's been fairly quiet as far as committees go. But I did want to mention, and I'm sure we may hear some comments about the power outage from the, the recent storm. But first of all, I mean, you know, the DPW did a great job getting out there, getting everything cleaned up. I mean, before the storm was over, I heard chainsaws and, you know, front-end loaders getting out there. So thank you for that. And you know, we did have prolonged power outage and somewhere in the area, 50% of the state was out. And so I, I received as well as other members of the council, numerous emails about how things were handled. And you know, I'd like to say that, you know, based on what we had control over, our administrator Kirshenbaum and DPW director Mike Campbell had control over, I think that they managed the situation very well. You know, JC P and L, I think, was gonna be getting into our town days after they actually got here and they were able to get us prioritized. And so if anybody has any comments, I'd like to hear them. But I, by and large, I would say that the way the storm was handled by, by our professionals here was, was great. And I wanted to thank them for that. So thank you. That's my report. I don't, I don't have anything else. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Juan?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm still on delay. Get my internet up and going. I want to thank Mike Campbell and our wonderful DPW for the cleanup. The storm was, wasn't even over and they were out cleaning up. They just did such a wonderful job. I'm so proud of them. And I know people were, I, I was out too. So I understand what it was to be without. And I know it's frustrating. But the mayor, Ed Kirshenbaum, did everything they could. They cussed the heck out of JC P and L. It's an entity we have no control over. In fact, I didn't expect to see power till today. And I was really thrilled when late Saturday afternoon, my refrigerator went on. So that was very exciting. I mean, things are getting bad when I get excited about a refrigerator going on. But they did everything they could. And I know people are impatient. It's been a bad summer between COVID being locked up, everything that we've gone through. And I understand that people are losing patience. But honestly, we're trying to do our best at an incredible time. And I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that they did. Oh, just one little side note. I've noticed that trees are dying. The tree in my backyard is shedding leaves. And I read somewhere just today that there are trees all around that are losing their leaves. This is something called a burn, a storm burn, because the winds were so high and there was no rain. So the trees were actually burned by the wind. And you'll, you'll notice all over, trees are losing their leaves. I just saw that somewhere today. I thought that would be interesting. We're having a first ADA meeting next Thursday. So we're coming out of hiding. So hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have some newsreel on ADA. And that's it. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, Ed, and everybody who worked so hard, Mike Campbell, Chief Scott, for all your work through the storm through the week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council President Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to praise business administrator Kirshenbaum and DPW director Campbell. You know, I tell you what, our DPW guys, they really, really shined, especially when you compare them to the disappointing response from JC P and L. I mean, our guys were right there, right from the very beginning, and they were making sure they got everything done that they needed to get done. And it was just outstanding to watch them work. And I felt very lucky to live in Belmar where that kind of thing happens. It's really, really great. And now the lights are all on. And meanwhile, I learned how to take apart the carbureator generator and put it back together. And oh, what a learning experience that was. Okay. The only thing I have to report, I guess I have what I think of as the beach report, because there's been three weekends since the last council meeting that I've been able to be down as part of the friendship force on the boardwalk on Saturday and Sunday, just seeing how things are going. And I'm really happy to report that things are going more smoothly every single weekend. The, the efforts that business administrator Kirshenbaum and our social media director, Mr. Sabia, and the beach administrator, Jeff Cobiello and his wife Erica, the, the work they're doing to make sure that the status of the beach sales, bad sales is going out in public is really help, is really helping. And this past weekend, you know, sometimes the simplest ideas are just the best. Each gate had a sandwich board sign saying daily badge is sold out so that people would know as soon as they could see the sign, then the gate attendants were relieved from some of that, oh, I'm sorry, we're sold out, that part of the job. I mean, the, the gate attendants universally regret having to tell anybody that they can't come to the beach. I mean, it's, it's an awful thing to have to do. I've done my share of it, being down there helping out. But I think everything we've done to improve those communications with public and with the residents, the text alerts work, the signs at the end of Ocean, either end of Ocean Avenue and down on Route 35 that really work, put things on the radio really works. It really works. And it's just got the, a little easier every single weekend. It's, it's become less of a stress fest about what's going to happen. It seems like the beach staff really knows what to expect and it's able, they're very able to handle it. They were always able to handle it. But it, I think it's, I'm happy seeing things be easier for them. Absolutely. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We hit, we did have a rough week last week. We had a storm Monday night. We had the hurricane come through. I think JC P and L was not prepared for what, what was gonna happen. I, first of all, I have to thank business administrator Kirshenbaum. He was relentless with JC P and L. And finally, we were able to get the power on sooner than expected because of his persistence with JC P and L. So I have to really thank him. It was a rough week. I know there's a lot of frustration. I want to thank everybody that called with the mean phone calls, the mean correspondence back and forth, you know, the mayor and the governing body could only do so much. We couldn't get your power back on for you. We are not JC P and L. But, and I, I get the frustration of everybody. I was without power myself for the four days. So but some of the comments and a couple of things I want to go over, and I want to echo a lot of what council already said. But like the, you know, if you look down the beach, the amount of sand that blew, and you see the, the kids in the morning shovel and all that heavy sand. They did an unbelievable job. We had the, all our beach staff on the boardwalk. When you walked down the next morning, there was a spot of sand on it. Mike had them sweeping all the sand off. The, our, our street sweepers up and down, they cleaned up Ocean Avenue. They did a fabulous job. And then I gotta say that the DPW crew, not even an hour after the storm was over, going around, cutting down the trees, getting everything done. And it would have been nice to have a nice little email to say, we really do appreciate it. Instead of giving me correspondence that they don't have electric. So, but anyway, I get the frustration, but I just want to say that, you know, I really do appreciate it. They really worked hard. They don't realize how hard the police department worked with all the power being out, the extra patrols that had to be on to make sure that everybody stayed safe during the night without any power. Our code force, our code enforcement out there. And then before the storm hit on Sunday and Monday, the, the lifeguards were making 80 rescues because of the rough water and trying to keep everybody safe. And even, even all the 80 people that were saved, never, nobody ever sent an email saying, hey, they did a good job. But and then first aid and fire. We had the, the 12-year-old, a tree fell on the 12-year-old. They did an unbelievable job. Mike and his crew cutting that tree down, getting the, getting the child out from underneath the tree. Thank God, everything was okay. First aid got them to the, to the hospital. But it was unbelievable to see how our employees took care of our town. And so I really want, I really want to say thank you to each and every one of them. I hope I didn't forget anybody. The office staff led by April and everybody in the office staff working behind the scenes, unbelievable job. So I really do appreciate it. But that, that's my report. I just hope I didn't forget anybody. So we'll move on to public session on the consent agenda items that are left. So if anybody has any comments?
Ready? Standby. Need two seconds for some hands. I see one. Mark, stand by. And Mark, are you there?
Yeah. This is actually Mary Ann Fury, 601 Eighth Avenue.
Hi, Mary Ann.
It was Mark's Zoom ID, so apologies for that. We have residents between Main Street and D Street have submitted a petition to have speed humps installed as well as-
Mary Ann, I just hate to cut you off, but this is just a public session on the resolution items. We'll have that, we'll have that at the public session at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay. Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Just remember to raise your hand again when we get to that section we can speak. Thank you. Okay, one second. And I think other people had the same idea. So I see no hands. Let's wait one more second. Any hands? Three, two, one. No hands.
I have a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, and next we have just one more resolution, Resolution 2020-158. This is the Resolution authorizing the issuance of a retail consumption license to the Irish Curse, also known as 10th Avenue Burrito. Councilman Brennan, you're going to recuse yourself? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Councilman Juan? Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Next, can I have a motion to table ordinance 2020-33?
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2020-32. This is an ordinance amending chapter 44 Stormwater Control. So it's open for public hearing if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance.
Standby, looking for hands. Three, two, one. I see no hands.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-32?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilman Juan? Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
I have to tell you, I am so happy that we are doing this. This is something we've needed for a long time. And I'm really, I want to thank Mr. Kirshenbaum and our engineers for making this happen. This is really important for the town. I vote yes.
And Mayor Walsifer?
Yes, I, I agree with you. This is really important. It's a long time coming, but yes. Okay, now we're on the public comment. Mary Ann, if you-
Okay, stand by. That was Fury, right?
Right, yes.
Standby. Okay.
Hey, thank you. Once again, Mary Ann Fury, 601 Eighth Avenue. I'd just like to address the petition that the residents of Eighth Avenue from Main Street to D Street have submitted. What we're looking for is solution to our traffic problem. We've got a four-way stop sign that people do not adhere to. And I wish it was an occasional, did not adhere to it, but it's constant. Sometimes, all day long, they're going through. It's not just the summer tourists, it's locals. We've got town employees. We've got, for some reason, they don't like to stop at the stop sign between Eighth and E Street. We are, along that stretch, we have the convent, we have the small St. Row School. We're a block between two churches, which means we have people constantly and children, adults and children constantly- We're a block between two churches, which means we have people constantly and children, adults and children constantly crossing that street back and forth. It's a dangerous situation. What we're looking at, and this is, we're just doing this out of frustration, I have to tell you, because we're looking for a solution. I don't have the answers. I'm not a traffic engineer. So we started with a speed hump. Krista Berber, and I think that she'll speak in a little while, but she's done some research. In Europe, they've had a lot of success with these optical illusion walkways. They're fairly inexpensive. They're stencils, you paint them on the ground, but they're really successful. There are 45 towns in England right now who are using them with a great deal of success. So we've had numerous feedback from our residents. I would have to say that we got 98% of the residents who live on those two streets, they signed. And they signed willingly. They were all very supportive and enthusiastic about a solution to our problem. In closing, I would like to say, and I'm begging you, that we used to have the portable stop signs in the middle of the street on each side on Eighth Avenue. For some reason, they were moved. I know that they still exist because they're on other streets. I'm begging that by this weekend, by Friday, we have those portable stop signs re-put in the middle of the street to at least give us some sign that we're getting a response.
Okay, I'll have to ask Mr. Campbell if we have any of them laying around that we could use, or if not, he's gonna have to get some made up. But as far as your petition, we are sending it over to the police department, to their traffic division to take a look at it and and see if it's an enforcement problem. Or i- is it a problem? Because we have the stop signs there, so maybe the problem is more enforcement than actually doing, putting everything in, but they're gonna take a look at it. They'll give us a report back in a few weeks, and we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we got Krista.
Yes, hi Krista. Your name and address, please.
Yeah, so Krista Berber, and I'm at 512 and a half, Eighth Avenue. Also known as the Belmar Motor Speedway. We have a significant problem, not just with them running the stop signs, but with the speed as well. They are not even slowing down. In fact, I sat on a porch during this meeting and at least a dozen cars blew right through. And on the day that I went to go talk to Mark and Mary Ann about, you know, trying to find some solution, I was nearly went over to drop me home. I received several letters, about a half a dozen from people on the streets talking about their experience. We have seniors that are afraid to cross the street to go to mass. We have, you know, I'll read you some other comments. But, you know, it's it's dangerous just trying to back out of your driveway. But new owners of homes are extremely concerned about the speed people go down the street. Speed bumps would certainly do a tremendous amount of good. And and people are speeding through the stop sign if it doesn't exist. And as your comment of whether or not it's an enforcement issue, it's definitely an enforcement issue. And when you park the car at the intersection, everybody drives like a boy scout. So, I mean, you know, you want revenue, hang out on an intersection, and you could just nab them all day long. So we need to make it safer for pedestrians. And we've got to slow the people down. It's a quality of life issue and a safety issue. I'd like to hear what the follow up is gonna be and when we are gonna hear back from whoever it is that's going to look into us, and I want to know who that person is.
Okay, well, it's it's going over to the chief of police, and there is a traffic division. I don't know who's in the traffic division right now, but the chief of police will be handling it. They'll give a report back to the mayor and council. Probably, I'm saying a few weeks, hopefully it'll be sooner.
And just to clarify, you know, the the speed bumps that we're asking for really, you know, could be the temporary version that you can pull out in the winter months to make plowing easy should it ever snow again. But, you know, we've got to improve the safety around here. It's really, really bad. Everybody's upset.
Okay, Mr. Kershawbaum?
What we'll do is also tomorrow and get some enforcement down there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Krista. Standby. And we have a mic coming to you, sir. Mike, are you there? Standby.
Yes, I'm here. Hey, Mayor and Council, Mike Dulcey, Fifth Avenue.
Hey, Mike.
Hey, hey, hey. I wanted to bring up just a quick issue to consider is the smoking on Main Street. The smoking and vaping and such. I'm a family man. I'm on Main Street, you know, with my family all day. Strollos, A-Crop, Don's, Federico's, you know, down to Taylor's and such. And the cigarette smoking on Main Street, not a day goes by that we're walking through clouds. Now, I know smoking is prohibited on the boardwalk, which is a great benefit to families and healthy individuals. And in this day and age, we all agree that smoking kills. I'm not gonna put an advert here. But just briefly, from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, they do state emphatically, there is zero risk-free level of secondhand smoke exposure. And even brief exposure can be harmful to health. And further, the negative health effects in children include respiratory symptoms, respiratory infections, including bronchitis and pneumonia. We live in a COVID era at this point. And I think it's something for us as a community to consider is how we want to care for the innocent who choose not to smoke. Who, you know, if you're a cigarette smoker, hey, I can't stop you. I'm gonna lovingly try and give you some advice and steer you in another way. But at the same time, it should not be, I should not be subjected, my children and those who do not want to be subjected to secondhand smoke, we should not be subjected to that on Main Street when we're trying to engage in commerce and spend our dollars and have a nice day as we are protected when we're down at the beach. So that's something I wanted to share with you to think about, and hopefully something that we can start to move forward and clean up the town just to a higher level. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike. One moment. Okay, and we have a Sharon. Standby, thank you for waiting. Sharon, are you there?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Sharon.
Yes, hi, Sharon Mahoney, 800 Main Street. So I'm going on the tail end of Mary Ann Fury and Krista's comments about Eighth Avenue. I live in in the building where State Gold is, and I've been here for, I can't believe it's been this long, but eight years now. And it is a struggle to get out of the Eighth Avenue lot. And we can't always expect to, oh, you can go out the other side, which I try to do in the summertime, because I can't make a left on Eighth Avenue anyway. But it is really dangerous. So what I'm asking, in addition to what Mary Ann and Krista requested, is we would like to be involved in any discussions that happen. I know you said you're gonna send up to the police department. But we would like this to be an open community discussion as well, because maybe options you're thinking of, you know, or that you aren't thinking of, we might have some suggestions for. Because, you know, as a community, which was brought up earlier about the discussion with Silver Lake and the money from a grant going somewhere, that I think that feedback to the community on this and ideas would be would be a nice thing for the community to know that we can participate in that. So a couple of things, in addition to the short sign that Mary Ann referred to, the short signs, there used to be one at E and Eighth and at D and Eighth, right in the middle of the roads, is, I don't know, you know, money wise, if we're gonna talk about any kind of investment, but getting the huge words 25 miles an hour painted in the actual road, you know, on the pavement that enforces the fact that this is 25 miles. I can't tell you even on Main Street, I mean, sitting out on my balcony, how many people fly down Main Street with traffic because they got a green light, they're trying to make a left on Eighth. And I'm not talking just tourists or people who drive through town, but I'm gonna admit that, you know, town trucks, those little garbage trucks, they fly faster than 25 miles an hour through here. Street sweepers, et cetera, they're going pretty fast. So it is a townwide problem. So if there's any way that we can be also involved with those discussions to see how we can be heard and and provide feedback on what, versus just the council and police going back and forth with suggestions. You know, I think it would be welcome to us to also be involved with those discussions.
Well, you can do that. You you could email the chief all your suggestions, and she could forward them to the traffic bureau. But we're gonna have the professionals take it. We'll have our professionals take a look at it first. There's a lot of laws that are involved when when we're doing all this kind of things, you know. We would love to put up those nail strips so everybody flattens their tires when they're going, but we can't do that. So, but, you know, you could email all your suggestions over to the chief. She'll send them down to the traffic bureau. Let let them take a look at it. I I know I was on the traffic team when the circle went on in at D. And I was there when the the four way stops went up. We thought that was gonna deter a lot of a lot of the issues that we had on Eighth Avenue, but obviously, we still have an issue. So, you know, we'll take a look at it and and, you know, let them take a look at it and see what they could do and see how we can handle enforcement. You know, enforcement's always a big key to, component to all the all the traffic issues. So, but let them take a look at it. If you have suggestions, I suggest that you email them over to the chief. If you guys get together and you want to have some suggestions, put them over there, and they'll take a look at them.
Okay, and then I have one more thing I want to bring up, Sharrows. Anything happening with with getting those put in on any of the streets?
Oh, for the bicycles, yeah, yeah. We were hoping to get some for the summer, but as you know, with COVID, everything has been pushed back. But yeah, I'm in agreement with you. We need some of those on some of the streets, Ocean Avenue, Main Street. So we'll be working on that. We're gonna try to have them in before next summer.
Okay, and one more thing, which Mayor, you had brought up when I, we were at a grand opening, probably eight months ago, is the lane striping on Eighth Avenue coming in from 35.
Well, that's that's still being worked on. We got approvals from the state. They haven't gave us a timeline to put all that in, but they're gonna do the 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 counters on the walkways at Eighth. They're gonna put a traffic arrow in. It's it's approved. We're just trying to figure out when they're gonna do it, so.
Okay.
But it is approved to be done with turn arrows for Eighth Avenue, so.
And the walk signals.
Yes, the walk signals, so, and the striping down Eighth Avenue. So that's that's all been approved. We're just waiting in bated breath for the state to give us the green light that they're coming to do it, so.
Oh, super. Okay, great. Good to hear. All right, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And we are going to a Jen. Standby. And waiting for unmute. Standby. Little Zoom technical difficulties. Jen, are you there? Okay, Jen, that's not allowing me to unmute. You can stay up. We'll try again in a little bit. One moment, please. I'll lower your hand. Please raise your hand again, please. All right, and we're gonna go to Mark S. And Mark, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate everything that council and the mayor are doing during this very, very difficult time. I just had a comment about the storm outage and.
Mark, can you just give us your name and address, please?
Sure, Mark Swannardt in 412 11th.
Okay.
So I just want to comment on the storm response. And I think the council might be a little bit confused about why the mayor, members of the town were up in arms. The the members of the town were upset because we weren't really being communicated to by the council. We had gotten a text from JCP and L that said, okay, it's gonna be Tuesday at 11:30, right? And so that frustrated a lot of people, and we knew that was maybe a false time that they put way out there. But I would just urge the council in these situations.
Well, they gave us, they gave us the same time. They gave the mayor and council the exact same time that you got, so.
Right.
Thank God that we had, business administrator Kershawbaum was relentless trying to get them to prioritize us because of the amount of people that we have coming in for the beach. He was able, actually able to get us done three days earlier. But, you know, a lot of people said to be about communication. Well, the only communication we had is exactly what you were getting. And they weren't telling us any different.
But, Mr. Mayor, we would appreciate it to know that you were calling the the utility on the town's behalf to try to get it restored sooner than you actually did. Once we found that out, nobody complained anymore. We just wanted to know that you were fighting on our behalf to get the power restored as soon as you could, and that message wasn't getting out there. And once that message got out the next morning, after I complained about it, and and Councilman Brennan was nice enough to send me a response. And, you know, we appreciated all those efforts, and we applaud the DPW. They were out very early after the storm. So we do appreciate everything. We would just urge the council to communicate, even if it's bad news, even if it's the same timetable that we're given from the utility, we would just ask you to communicate so the members of the town realize that you're working on these storms on our behalf.
Well, we put everything out on our website, all on social media. I know people want code red messages. But we didn't know what to say on the code red messages, other than we're getting the same. So we're doing the best we can. We had everything up on our website as soon as we were getting it, all on our social media, out on Twitter as fast as we could get it. I'm sorry that you didn't get code red messages. Believe me, I got enough mean hateful calls and text messages about this whole thing. But we'll try to do better next time.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the all the work the council's doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mike. And we are coming to Brian. Standby. Brian, go ahead.
Hi, it's Brian McGovern, 207 South Lake Drive here in Belmar. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. I understand your vote three to one for the for the Resolution 2020 154 for applying for the CDBG application. I just want to make sure that that application, as I understand it, gets amended so that there's no mention of building a bridge.
No, we we approved it as is. We approved it as is.
Okay, that resolution does say the project known as a Silver Lake pedestrian footbridge.
Correct.
So that's, so you pass a three to one, and there's not gonna be, so what you're saying is that bridge might still get, if you get the grant, would still be built.
Well, if we get approved for the grant, we have to have a, we have to accept the money. So there's a lot of process before before anything of a bridge ever gets built. But we are going forward with applying for the money.
Okay, just as long as the council is aware that any any talk of the bridge being built two years down the line, this is gonna come back up again.
Yes.
With a lot of fury.
Yep.
Okay, just so you understand that, and.
We don't have to, I mean, at that time, we don't have to accept the money, but of course, we're gonna apply. We'd be we'd be idiots not to, so.
Would you be, you said you'd be idiots not to accept it, even with it, they tell you.
Brian, 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 let me tell you something. We, it's a long shot to get the grant. There's a lot before that even happens. We're applying for the grant, just like you've been up here and applied for grants before.
Okay.
And it's a long shot for us to even get it. If if we do happen to win the lottery and get it, now it has to come back before mayor and council to accept it. So at that time, that's when the changes all could be made to whether we're gonna accept what's there or we're gonna make the changes. So it's a mute point to even talk about it, this this juncture. We're gonna apply. That's what we're doing.
Very good. And I just want to mention that that one signature from Australia was Peter Aronis. Very good. Uh, and I just want to mention that that one signature from Australia was uh Peter Aronis. Your own is family is longtime Delmar family. Peter graduated from Delmar Elementary. I guess he happens to live in Australia now. And if you look at the uh Delmar flag that's be on hanging on the wall behind Tom Brennan, you'll see the importance of swans. We've got swans on our official flag. So for Delmar. So going back to, I hope that sanctuary is kept for the the ducks and the swans. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we got a and then Mark standby. Mark, go ahead, please.
Hello again. Uh, Mark Pfeiffer, 319 Fifth Avenue. Um, I wanted to suggest that we apply for the Monmouth County Open Space Program this year. Uh, the deadline for the online application is September 17th and is available now on the website. I know, Ed, you're shaking your head no. And I know why you're shaking your head no, because it's matching. It's a matching program. I understand that. Let me give you a little background. And then I will suggest what we use the money for. For 2018 and 2019, Monmouth County allocated $2 million for the grants. The amount is also 2 million for 2000 for 2020. Typically, about 13 towns in Monmouth County receive grants from 50,000 to 250,000. It is a matching program. So if we apply and we're lucky enough to say, receive 125,000, then we need to match that amount. Well, our finances are not in great shape. We should find a way to raise the amount if we are fortunate enough to receive the money. Perhaps taking from another part of our budget and or combined with fundraising. And I would be very happy to assist or lead in the fundraising. Uh, but we did not receive anything in 2018 or 2019. And here are just a few towns and the amounts they received. Titten Falls in 2019 received $200,000 for their Traditions Park improvements. Now, obviously, I'm thinking of Cleary Park. Middletown received 250,000 for Normandy Park improvements. Red Bank received 200,000 for their Red Bank improvements, park improvements, phase two. Neptune City, 200,000 for Memorial Park Playground and Pat Juan to your um initiatives, ADA improvements, 200,000 dollars. Wall Township, Community Park South improvements, 125. Deal. Who would think Deal needs any money? Harry Crinkle. Park, phase three improvements, 125,000. Deal, give me a break. Spring Lake, 125,000. Divine Park, phase three improvements. Spring Lake Heights, 125,000. The money is out there. So let's just say we receive 125,000 to improve McCleary Park. What do we do with it? We raise money, we find 125,000 in a budget, or we get people to fundraise. I will help with the fundraising, my wife and I. Um, since 2011, which is what, which is when I moved to Delmar all time, coming to council meetings and each year, redoing the tennis courts at McCleary Park has been a topic of conversation with council members acknowledging the need. Here's the good news. We didn't do it. We didn't do it. And you know why that's good news? Because people are no longer hardly playing tennis. What people are playing now is pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah.
Pickleball. And Pat, we spoke about this uh last year. So who's playing pickleball primarily? Senior citizens. I'm 70 years old. My wife Angela and I just started playing August of last year. The sport is booming. Bradley Beach runs four, and I'm almost done, so don't get them, get impatient with me. Bradley Beach runs four outdoor pickleball courts from March to November. Ocean Township runs four indoor pickleball courts during the winter and has outdoor uh courts in the warmer months. This year, Ocean Township added pickleball lines to every one of their about 20 outdoor tennis courts. Delmar runs two indoor court, indoor courts at the gym, which we played there many times. Pickleball has become so popular that Delmar, before the pandemic, had to close the game to new participants. And Ocean actually charges to use their courts. So finally, pickleball is very different from tennis, from a social point of view. And this is why it's important for senior citizens. With tennis, you typically show up with the group you want to play with. With pickleball, you don't. You just show up and you constantly switch players after each game. So you get to meet a lot of people. I don't need to meet more people. I have plenty of people I know. But a lot of senior citizens need to meet more people and they need to be out and they need exercise. And pickleball helps solve both of those issues. So here's what I did. At McCleary Park right now, we can actually convert two tennis courts into six outdoor pickleball courts. So I did some research. I received a quote from a vendor for $200,000 to do it. And then I found out that East Brunswick, which is where I used to live, converted two of their tennis courts to six pickleball courts for a total of, and this is six outdoor permanent pickleball courts for $80,000 total without having to go out for bid because they used the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. So if we apply for 125, we get 250, we can convert two of those tennis courts to six permanent pickleball courts. Redo the other two tennis courts. You're looking at about 100,000. We'd have another $150,000. We could use that for other improvements at McCleary. And if you don't get the other grant that you want to get uh for Silver Lake, we could put that into into the proposal. We could either say we need to put fencing or lights at McCleary Park or for improvements to Silver Lake and the Bird Sanctuary. I have copies of the actual project from East Brunswick, which I can share with you. What I'm asking is for you to consider having somebody on the council, and I'll be happy to be a part of this, take ownership of helping us do this application, which is due by the 17th. All these towns, not all these towns, but about, like I said, 15 towns get this money. If we are lucky enough to get 125 or $200,000, we're gonna be able to find that money for a year to make permanent improvements to McCleary Park and perhaps Silver Lake. So that's my statement.
Business administrator, you know about this grant?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I know about this grant. Delmar had this grant and I don't have it in front of me. I believe we missed, Delmar missed the timeline. Uh, Mr. Ferguson was here last year and got us $100,000 back. But it's it's a match grant. They do not pay for engineering. They do not pay for certain types of labor. It's a 50 50 match and Delmar basically did work on McCleary Park for the uh bathrooms. They were supposed to do everything over, all over in McCleary Park. And we ended up losing uh close to $200,000 for a $100,000 grant. So we gotta be very careful what we're looking at. I just got the application uh last week for the open space grant. But we just went through uh a problem with it. There's other ways and other grants that we can look at. I've been more than happy to sit down with you. We would, uh, I know Pat Juan has talked about the uh courts down there by McCleary Park. We really want to get that place up and running. Um, so Mark, if you can call my office tomorrow, uh, we can sit down and really discuss what what we need to do.
All right, I would do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much, Mark. One moment. Going to Mr. John Walsh, stand by. Go ahead, sir.
All right, yes. Uh, well, I'm glad to hear that we're doing the mobile site. I know that was actually something I was gonna bring up. Um, and I'm glad to hear that we're launching it soon. I want to thank Tom for the.
Can you please say, uh, say your name and where you're from, please?
I'm on 11th Ave and B Street, John Walsh. I want to thank Tom for the beach texts. I think that's going quite well and contacting the radio stations. Um, I think we have like a good idea now, moving forward as a town, that two o'clock is when the beach badge dailies are sold out. And I think maybe that's something we start posting that, you know, don't come after two o'clock and expect to get on the beach. I mean, it's it's happened every weekend since we started. So that's just a suggestion of mine. Um, I think the texts are needed because our Facebook and Instagram posts get about six likes when the beach is closed. So no one's checking. And I think to someone else said earlier that these code reds, that's why they're important. Because our community just isn't on Facebook. I am, I'm 26. I I like social media. I'm on social media. That's just not who this town is right now. Um, I also just wanted to ask about the parking. My dad came on council meeting two weeks ago and asked if we're going to extend parking from seven to 2 AM on the north end of town. And I want to know what's up with that and if that's changed.
We will be looking at the parking for next summer. Right now, it's staying in place. Uh, and we gotta get better signage up there. I already told them we're gonna do that. We're gonna work on that over the winter and get the signage put up. And uh, we'll be working on adjusting the parking. Since this is the first year that we had park mobile, uh, it went up quick. We didn't think you were gonna get it done in time, but uh, we definitely need some better signage up there for times and all that. So.
Yeah, I think.
We will definitely be working on it.
Yeah, I think signs would be great, um, just to tell you what times. And then even if it's gonna continue through the winter, because I mean, this, you know.
Ocean Avenue won't continue through the winter. That'll, yeah, that won't happen during the winter.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jen. Okay, and one moment. And we go to BL again. One moment.
Hello, Brett Lomis, 9th Ave. Uh, so, uh, quoting the mayor, uh, you know, you said we would be idiots not to apply for the grant, which, you know, yes, definitely. Uh, but, you know, if we hit the lottery and won the grant, then wouldn't that change to we'd be idiots not to accept it? And then build the bridge. Um, so, you know, let's say we won the grant. Would we get to keep it if there was no bridge in the bridge grant?
We'll see what happens. Let's see if we get, we'll, we'll see if we even get the grant. And then we'll be able to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so that's kind of goes to my, I guess my point is that all these little decisions add up, you know? Um, all the little votes add up and, you know, I I'd wanna find out from the council members um, who, you know, who supports a bridge versus applying for the grant. I agree that we should apply for a grant, right? Um, I I don't think a bridge should be built. Uh, so.
Okay, well, we value your.
Council members are willing to answer. I I would like to see whether the council.
Well, we already answered because we all voted yes. So, I mean, three of us voted yes. Three of us voted yes. So, uh, that's your answer. It, we're applying for the grant for the bridge.
Okay. Uh, because uh, when some of the, when some of the, when I guess Mr. Campbell was speaking, he was saying that the the grant was not really for a bridge. It was for beautification. Um, so I think, uh, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that the council members that voted yes for the grant also support building a bridge.
As of right now, that's what the vote was. Yes.
The other thing that I wanted to, and this is just something I've brought up a couple of times, and and uh, I'm really happy to hear that there that the walk signals on Eighth Ave have been approved. Um, but I don't believe there's walk signals anywhere north of Eighth Ave. So Eighth Ave needs them, but I also think there's a couple of other streets that aren't county roads that that need them also. And I wanted to to.
Well, we have them at 10th and 12th, so uh, I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, north, like 7th and 6th.
Oh, no, it's all approved. It's all approved from the state. 8th, 7th, and 6th. They're all getting them at the same time.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One moment. See, standby. And we're looking at Cyrus. Oh, no, we got a new person. We'll go to uh this is Moore. Hold on, please. Carol.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Carol Moore, 1206 Oakwood Road. I just want to um, address the subject of the code red calls like this past week when we were out of power. Uh, out of power, we can't use our computers. And we can't really get to the website. Yes, I could have on my phone, but I had to conserve my, the power on my phone. I couldn't use it to keep scrolling to the website and see what the town was saying. I mean, I even been a few times had to sit in my car, uh, charging my phone because of other things. So it's just my suggestion, when there is even a minor emergency in town, like the uh blackout, if you want to call it, lack of a different phrase, if the mayor and council can communicate with us, not constantly, but once in a while with the code red and let us know, yes, we're in communication with JCPNL. We are, we, these are the hours we were told, blah, blah, blah. Because I wasn't getting anything from G C, JCPNL. So getting a code red is important to quite a few of us in town. I, I'm on the computer all the time. I'm on Facebook, but during a a power outage, I can't. So if, if, just a suggestion for the future, please, keep in touch with us via via the code red.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One moment. And Sharon, one moment. And for Sharon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was up to ask. Okay, Sharon Mahoney, 800 Main Street. Just in response to that last woman who spoke, um, and I know that you have done this before, but other towns have the calling system where you can sign up to get phone calls, where somebody records a phone message, and then it goes out to anybody who has signed up for that alert by phone call. Not a text, not a, an email, but an actual phone call. There are still a lot of people in town, I believe, who have landline phones. You know, not everybody's living in the cell phone world. You know, that's maybe a secondary phone for some of these homeowners.
Code red, right? I mean, are you talking about the code red system?
Well, the woman sounded, I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't know who spoke, but that it it was only coming through an electronic device, like an email or your phone or your computer. But um, I believe I'm signed up for phone calls, but I have not gotten a phone call in a long time. I think the last one that went out was from Jim McCracken, and I don't, I can't remember when it was. It was probably sometime last year. So I don't know if you're still using that system or not, and that might be something to think about.
The last one, Tom Brennan sent one out, what, last week? Yeah, so.
Was that a phone call, though?
That's the phone call, yeah.
Yeah, it was a phone call before the storm.
Maybe I, maybe I fell off the list then.
And we also sent out two or three uh code red messages for JCPNL. So we did send some out as soon as we had the information.
Right, but that was not a phone call. That was a.
No, that was a phone call.
Oh, okay. Yeah, then I must have fallen off the list then. I have to get back on there somehow.
You gotta go to our website and sign up again, Sharon.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And uh, we just wanted, uh, new people that are raising their hands. Oh, yeah, but let's see what we have here. Oh, oh, the same people. Here we go. Going back to you, Mark. Standby for Mark and Zoom.
No. I didn't raise the hand. That's okay.
Oh, okay, then I'll, you good?
Maybe I didn't unraise it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, then we're just going to Cyrus. Standby. Cyrus, sir.
How's it going, guys? Um, I'm back again. I just have, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, um, can I ask a question to the town attorney?
I'm sorry, I had unmute myself. Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Um, you know, we had a conversation, I don't know, several months ago, and you may have been, you know, a little confused, but you know, and I questioned the space between the edge of the curb and the edge of the sidewalk. You had said that, you know, it was a town-owned property. And then obviously, I I guess based on your research, you must have realized that it was not town-owned property, that in fact it was an easement. So my question is, if you did do some research on this topic. So my question is, if you did do some research on this topic, when does the easement expire? If the tree parts go beyond the sidewalk, then is it in violation of the easement, is my question? And I want to say this for the record, because I have a reason for this.
Jared, I think you got unmute.
Okay, I... You said it's a good reason for it, and I didn't hear what the reason was.
Well, no, what I want to know is that you had said you had communicated to me before that the town owned the property between the edge of the sidewalk and the edge of the curb. And, you know, that's not true. You have an easement to it. You don't own it. I own it.
All right, Si, I'll be glad, and I had this discussion with Mike Campbell. I'll be glad to sit down with you if you have a survey of your house. And if your survey shows that you... what you're saying, that's different than I know. Normally speaking, the town has a, maybe a 24-foot wide paved street and maybe a 30-foot wide, what we call a right-of-way. It could be 30 feet, but anyway, there's more that the town owns in addition to the paved area. That's the norm. Now, your survey might show it different. I'm glad to sit down and you look at this.
No, 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 no. The question is that you said right-of-way. That is, you know, pretty much in part to what an easement is.
No, no.
It's not ownership.
Okay, look, Si, I can debate it with you. I'll be glad, because I'm indicating to you that the town owns between the curb and the sidewalk. You may not believe it. I'll be glad to look at your survey and go over it with you. That's why, when you get a title insurance policy, when you buy the property, normally speaking, they have a reservation, because part of your driveway is on town property. And you have an easement, effectively, from the town to extend your driveway over the town property to the regular street. That's the norm.
So for the record, for the record, you're saying that the town owns the property from what point to what point?
Well, if normally, and it depends on each street, depends how wide the streets are. Some streets have 50-foot width and 30-foot pave. So I can't... Therefore, there's 10 feet on each side. I don't know. I'd have to look at your survey, and I'd be glad to do it. And if you want to give it to April, she can email it to me, and I'd be glad to call you tomorrow. And I'll look at it. But I got to believe your survey is going to show that your property ends at the sidewalk.
Okay.
I'll be glad to look at it with you.
So again, just on the record, you own the property. It's not an easement or a right-of-way.
Who? Who you say? You, in the town?
Me in the town, yeah.
The town, normally speaking, I'll be glad to look at your survey.
Not normally speaking, but, you know, does the town own the property, or is it a right-of-way or an easement?
Si, he can't tell that without looking at your survey.
I mean, any street's going to be the same, Mark.
No, well, I think they are.
Well, maybe it is in Delmar. I don't know what your street is. I know the town owns 10 feet on mine.
I'm not arguing with you. I mean, I'm telling you, 90... As far as I know, every street is the way I just said it to you. Whether your street's different or whether the streets in Delmar are different, I'll be glad to look at them. But I'm telling you, that's the way it is. But I'll be glad to look at it for you.
All right, so I'll talk to April. But the second question I have to this is that, if in fact, you do own 10 feet from the face of the curb, you know, to the face of the sidewalk, at what point in time does that tree that you planted encroach upon a case of like an eminent domain where you've now encroached upon my property?
Well, you're getting a little more complicated. You're talking about when you say "you", you mean like the shade tree commission plants the tree in that area? Is that what you mean?
Well, the tree was planted 120 years ago.
Well, that's a good tree.
So it wasn't me that planted the tree. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, the tree has now gone beyond...
Sir, I didn't say "you". I said "the shade tree". I didn't say "you". I said "the shade"... Are you saying that the Shade Tree Commission planted the tree in what I'm telling you is the town property? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that the tree is definitely town property. So the point that I'm making is that if you have that easement or right-of-way, or if you own that property, first of all, you got to start cutting my grass, because I've been cutting it, you know, for the last 26 years. But in addition to that, you know, the thing is that if it goes beyond, you know, that 10-foot, 30-foot, 25-foot, and it becomes to encroach upon my property based on its root system, who's responsible for that?
Well, um...
I'll tell you this, Si, you...
I want to...
We have ordinances in place that you have to maintain the sidewalk. The sidewalk's probably on borough property. You have to maintain the grass part between the sidewalk and the curb. That's probably the whole property. But that's all in ordinances.
And, Mark, I did to the tune of $11,000 to put new sidewalks in.
Me too.
Unfortunately, what winds up happening is that these trees are continuing to upside the sidewalks.
Mr. Rightmeyer, the Borough Code includes provisions for the Shade Tree Commission. I know that's Councilman McCracken's jurisdiction, so to speak, and he's not here this evening. I'll be glad to go over that with you in general, but I can't answer a specific question like that without either sitting down with you or getting more facts. But I'm telling you that the mayor's correct. There are ordinances that we've adopted, which generally speaking, generally speaking, require the property owner to maintain that property.
Right, within your confines of your right-of-way or easement. But when it goes outside of your easement or your right-of-way to the property, then it becomes a question of whether or not you have gotten involved in an eminent domain situation where now you have taken over my property without legal cause.
Well, you're getting far down the field here. I don't think that's at all correct, and the town is not...
Okay, all right, well then...
...not exercising eminent domain.
Then, well, why not? You're taking over my property. Okay, you know what we'll do? We'll cut that little conversation and then answer that.
Si, if you want to give April your phone number, I'll be glad to talk to you tomorrow. I'll be glad to...
Great, super. We'll do that.
But also, if you have it, please give her your survey. And if you have a title insurance policy, give it to her, and I'll look them over, and I'll be glad to talk to you about all of this.
Okay, all right, terrific. I appreciate it.
Anytime, no problem.
You know, I'm not trying to be... I'm not trying to, you know, stir the pot here, but, you know, the fact of the matter is that, as you'd said, Mark, you put in $1,000 worth or $11,000 worth of sidewalk. So did I, and now they're coming up again. And I did it four years ago.
Why don't you ask the Shade Tree Commission to cut down the tree, the 120-year-old tree?
Because they're going to tell me that I have to pay for it.
Okay, well, let's say what. Give me a call tomorrow, Si. I'll be glad to talk with you.
Si, if you feel so strongly about this, why don't you go get an attorney?
I have done that already.
That's what I was going to say. He wants to use our attorney.
Yeah, why are we paying for...
He just liked my advice, so why is he...
No, 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 because I wanted to get his answer on record for my attorney, which he obviously didn't do. You know, the fact of the matter is that I actually have an attorney, and the idea is that, you know, we're going to go on the basis of eminent domain, which is a very... Yeah, which, you know, you have actually, you know, seized property.
Okay, I'd be glad that... If you want to give April your phone number, I'll be glad to speak with you tomorrow. She'll give you mine, vice versa. But please ask April to give her your survey, and let's look at it together.
All right, good. Terrific. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Stand by. Okay, 3, 2, 1. I see no hands.
Hey, I'm very happy after two and a half hours to be able to participate.
I knew you were going to fall asleep, Jared. All right, April.
Can I have a motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
All right. Good hearing you, Jared. Good hearing you.
Good night, everyone.
All right, thank you, everyone, for joining us.
Night, everybody.